Cool.
All right.
I began the recording.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call Tuesday, February 22, 2022 board work session via Zoom meeting and phone, scheduled from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. to order. All directors other than Director Bullerjack are present. And so we'll go ahead and welcome guests. It looks like we have Ms. Birdsong. Ms. Birdsong, welcome.
Hello.
And we'll go ahead and move along into the presentations, Board Budget Priorities 2022 to 2023.
All right, so thank you all for your feedback with the working document. Before I officially get started, I did want to apologize. I know that the ask at the last meeting was to have community input, but I was not able to get that before having this work session. But I will make sure that after we have this discussion with the new added items that I get on different platforms to make sure that we do have that feedback and input from student staff in the community. Thank you, Deb, for putting that on the screen. So one thing that I did want to mention that was a part of one of the board members' response was basically if it does not have a budget line item, then it's more like a comment or recommendation, and it should not be part of this actual document, but it doesn't mean that it can't be discussed within, let's say, I don't know, the Budget Advisory Committee platform. This is strictly budgeted dollar items. So with that, it looks like with the staff appreciation, for the most part, got rid of pretty much the behind-the-scenes information. That is an event that we do have every year. We allocate dollars every year for that. I don't see that going away, even with COVID. We even tried to do an online platform because that's something that is important to the board as well as fellow colleagues. So I'm not sure if that's something we want to keep here because it is something that we do do every year and earmark dollars for. But again, that's you guys' call.
I'm just wondering if we want to ask the staff if they would like any end-of-the-year celebration where they can all get together, or would they rather have things interspersed throughout the year? Is that something we could ask the staff for their preference? What is it that would make them feel recognized and such? Any thoughts?
We can ask, but you know, again, the dollars are there. Whether it's, you know, once a year or, you know, every quarter, you know, leave it to the discretion of the principals, but just make sure that there's dollars allocated there for principal to do something for their staff.
It's kind of nice to be able to get all together. I think it's rewarding for the staffs to be able to get to know each other a little bit.
Just to chime in here, I'm full supportive of getting folks' input on how they feel appreciated. I think that's important. Just confirming, so I think I got a little bit confused just a second when I pulled up Board docs again. So the other one is just the final from before, so that's the right.
Right, that's the one that was from the prior year. That's basically the starting of the working document for this year with no markups.
Okay, sorry, my brain just had, I was confused for a second there. I definitely agree. I know that it's still crossed through there, but the idea of taking it away from being a single event, though we keep the event in there, but shifting that language so it doesn't say events, or it broadens the way in which we can show appreciation and use that budget for that.
Maybe that's a conversation we could have later so that we could do the priorities. Is that what you would like?
Anyway, you're talking to me?
Talking to anybody that will listen.
My understanding is that we're naming what priorities are, and then Ms. Birdsong and Dr. Hernan and the team will decide how that, these are implemented.
Yeah, we can ask for that feedback. Again, the budget, the line item, the dollars are going to be there. So that's not an issue.
Okay, thank you, Veronica.
You're welcome. And so if we move to the next one, so I know that in conversations and talks about getting, you know, community council or parent council and stipends and things of that nature, and again, when it comes to giving stipends to community members, that's considered a gift of public funds, so we cannot necessarily do it from our federal dollars or our state allocation, state allocated dollars. But there are, I'm sure there should be some grants out there maybe that we can apply for that may be specific too, because I know that there's huge talks about community engagement and involvement when it comes to grants. And so that would be the best way that we could pay if that is what we're looking to do as far as offering stipends.
Veronica, I'm also aware of like different community-based organizations like SPED, the Southern Energy Association and beyond, that have worked like with the Kent School District. They just recently started working with the Highline School District to actually engage families and, you know, create a culture of welcoming and responsiveness for families. And that also they are doing things like providing stipends for families who participate. And so I'm wondering if there's also, as part of, I mean, I'm not, I don't have any ideas about amounts or anything like that, but if we are going to look at grants or if we're going to look at budget, you know, is there a way to potentially also have that be part of the conversation where we partner with people who, groups that actually this is their jam, this is their expertise, this they know how to do it well and can help our community out?
Oh, absolutely. And that would be a good way to navigate it as well, right? We would, I don't know, pay SPED to do, I don't know, the work for us, right? Versus us creating and paying the stipends to the actual community and staff, not staff, but the community. So yes, that is an option, absolutely.
So there are also, there are two bills that are still alive in the legislature in this session. One of them that is relevant to this topic, one of them would allow for stipends. And we'll see how that one gets through for, in particular for low-income families. So that we'll have to watch and, you know, the legislature is going to be, should be out in, you know, a few weeks. So we'll have an idea about whether there's some money available or some change in law available there to allow that. The other one is the, what's called the Language Access Bill. And so one of the line items you have there is building translation infrastructure. So that bill, you know, if that gets through, it's passed the House, it's going to, we'll see if it gets through the Senate and out the other end. But it would provide some funding for actually providing better language access to families. So we'll have to, we'll watch and see in the next few weeks if the legislature comes in with this. But there could very well be some dollars that come our way related to this particular topic. The other impact I was going to have on this one too was just input from staff, community members, students. In one of the sessions that I was in, the civic sessions where we were talking with students up at Foster, one of the suggestions from the, one of the students was to, you know, implement, kind of have an ongoing survey, if you will, where people can provide input to the district. And, you know, this, there's a whole other discussion here. I was looking at something the city implemented. Prior to COVID, it was called Tuculap Works and is a, it's a phone app where anybody in the city can get in and put in an issue that they want the city to take a look at. And then the issue gets assigned to some member, the appropriate member in the city, and then they follow up. And you can watch the track through as it goes through. And because one of the things that I noticed also, I've noticed this for years, and it came us also in some of the student meeting with the civics class, was so often somebody will bring up an issue and the person in the district that can actually do something about it is not, was not aware of it, you know, or the particular thing. So a lot of it's about connecting, you know, the people that have whatever the issue is with the person in the district that can actually do something about it. And if we had a system right now, it's, you know, for somebody to try and find the person that can actually do something about it, it's a rather involved process to try and go figure out through the website, okay, who's the right person to see on this? And if we had a system, the thing I liked about the Tuculap Works thing, they've, I guess, they turned it off during COVID, but I think they intend to turn it back on, is that you put in, you know, from a customer perspective, you put in what the issue is, and then somebody in the city figures out, you know, where the appropriate place to send it to. And so anyway, that's, that kind of a survey, ongoing input mechanism, I think, would be, would be really helpful if we're, you know, kind of interested in becoming, you know, a more customer service oriented kind of thing. So I just throw that out there. There's, I mean, there's a variety of software out there. And, you know, maybe some of our current vendors have that kind of thing. But anyway, I just wanted to throw that in the mix here.
I see that Carly had a comment in the chat. Carly, did you want to discuss that one?
So sorry, we're just typing in there. I was just thinking about it. So I was just curious, going back to the community council piece, since we know it's not something that can be funded by our district budget, but rather grants, I was just curious if it still makes sense for it to live in our budget priorities? Or if perhaps like creating a new budget priority bucket that includes projects or tasks that we want to prioritize to find grant funding for? Either way, but.
Nope, that's a great question. So when, so when it comes to specifically paying community members and parent stipends, we cannot do that with our dollars, right? But if we partner with somebody that can provide that third-party service, that's different. So we can actually work that into the budget because we do have dollars that would pay for that type of expense. We just can't pay directly to community members and parents.
Okay, so I see, I think that's the piece I was missing, that we do have money, but we just can't pay it directly. So there has to be a, almost kind of a third middleman, so to speak. Okay, okay. Great, thanks.
So Ms. Birdsong, you had mentioned like a parent council or a parent caregiver council or a community council. I am familiar with other districts, and I've actually been that do have different types of councils, and there actually are budget items, right? They actually have line items each year. And part of that is about sustainability and institutionalizing such things so that they're not something that exists, and then the grant goes away and now we don't have it. And so I just would turn that over to the board. If that is something, if we're looking at a collective community wisdom table or council or student leadership council, something like that, how is that something that we would want to consider this year as part of our board priorities?
Bridgette, how, I guess, what's the difference between what you just described in the bullet that's already there, the community council and parent council?
So I don't, I don't, I just, I have anything, like, I'm not really differentiating. I'm just, I'm just, I'm getting, I just want clarity. Is that possible to be a budget item? Is that what, is that sort of what this represents? So it doesn't just have to be a grant? It actually is coming from our district budget somewhere?
As long as, so let me look at the rules. All I know is for sure, if, like, let's say if we just put something, something together, right? We just had a random meeting and just said, hey, we just want community members, and then we decided to hand out $100 stipends for everybody that showed up. We can't legally do that. But if, like, let's, we say we put a resolution together for the board saying that, hey, we want this to be part of the culture of Tuculap School District, and whatever the case may be, there may be some work around with that. But I would have to look at other schools that have that type of model and setup to see exactly how they expend those dollars. Because again, I look gray and orange, but I never want to be on the front page of, you know, there's appropriating dollars, right? So I can do some follow-up to see what that looks like and maybe reach out to some of my contacts to see who has that type of support system already going and embedded in the culture of their district.
That's wonderful.
I believe the issue there is where the dollars come from. So if they come from the state general fund, you know, like the A dollars, then you can't give those dollars. However, if the revenue comes to us from, you know, a grant that allows that, then, then it's okay. And, and I guess when we're talking about your budget, this is our, the, the the general fund budget for the district. And so, and that, correct me if I'm wrong, Veronica, but I think both grant dollars and state dollars come into our general fund budget, correct?
Absolutely, but I think.
So it depends on how you extend that, depends on where the dollars came from.
Right, and I think from Bridget's standpoint too was the sustainability, right? Because if we rely on grants and the grant, are we going to, you know? So, but yes, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, both those are true, yeah.
Right, sounds good. So the race in equity, it pretty much just stayed the same. Again, I want to say that bucket of money is around $75,000. And we do pretty well spending it. We've never went over that dollar amount. And so we keep it as is and just keep moving with the $75,000 earmarked amount. Unless there's other language that wants to be added here.
How close did we get in our last budget cycle?
So I'm not going to hold up anybody's time. I will look that up and get back to you.
Okay. I wonder, like, my only thought around that is, I mean, I think there are some ways in which we could increase potential, like even the amount of PD around racial equity or training around the toolkit. I think there are ways that we can invest more in what's happening around racial equity. And so I wonder if there's even just additional language that could say, I don't know, giving us the possibility to increase that if necessary? Like if we do decide, maybe there's a great opportunity to spend additional funds. Oh, is there any wiggle room? Because I know that is just a significant priority as a whole for us in our district.
So I would say, let me run and see what the last, I don't, what's with the last three years look like? I know 2020 was kind of a weird number, but if we have never really been close to the 75, then I think 75, I mean, you can read that two different ways, right? Either we're not doing enough or that what we're doing, you know, it just, it's nowhere near the 75. So it just, you know, glass half-full or half-empty, right?
Okay.
Dr. Hernan, this, this year that is coming up will be our third year with Puget Sound ESD. Is that correct?
Correct. We are currently in year two. Next year is year three.
And that's what the, like, initial, like, agreement was for, was for three years. Is that correct?
Yeah, the current, the first contract was to take a look at a three-year kind of, basically like a strategic plan and ramp up. And then my guess would be that we would review that in this upcoming year to see if there's additional stages of development we'd like to do or partner with PSESD.
Yeah, that's my thought, is what's, what will happen next year that is sort of building upon? Or are we doing within the district for sustainability? And so if it's, you know, the creation of affinity groups that we're running, right? We're doing that work, even if Puget Sound ESD wasn't part of the picture. Or the opposite, do we join in, like, Puget Sound ESD has that transforming relationships and education network with, like, I don't know how many school districts, but they have teams that are actually working together in a network. I would just be curious about that third year, not just completing it, but how are we leveraging it to prepare ourselves moving forward into year four, five, six?
Yeah, those are all really good questions and ones I think that this spring, as we anticipate what next year looks like, those are, I think, some pretty crucial conversations. Getting an analysis from them to see what, where they think we are and then kind of where we think we are doing our own self-assessment about that.
So will that, so the $75,000 this year will be, or that we're proposing for next year, there will be assessment built into it?
I don't know about assessment. My thought is to ask the PSESD how they, what's the best course of reflection about where we are? Like, what would they use to assess where we are? And then what would be a good tool for us to use as kind of our own self-assessment?
Okay.
And to answer Carly's question, so in 1920, again, odd year, it was 9,000. 2021 was 18,638, and so far in 2122, it's about 40,000.
Sorry, that we've spent or that we have remaining?
That we've spent.
We've spent. Oh, wow. Okay, so we were spending even a fraction of our budget in 1920, again, realizing that was a weird year where COVID happened. Yeah, okay. Thank you for looking that up. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Okay, it looks like we've met the Creative Learning Labs, which is great. The next bullet was basically changing from 40 to 60%, but again, that doesn't have a budget line item, but that encompasses so many different things. You know, so I don't know if that's something we want to just, if we want to keep it there, it's not going to really have a budget line item. Again, that's a, that consists of so many different levels of different things, right? After-school programming, tutoring, curriculum, instruction, all those wonderful things.
Before you skip out the Creative Learning Labs, I agree with you. The, the original purpose of the Creative Learning Labs was to do that equal access, and that has been taken care of, correct? What I've been, I mean, I've spent some time in the Creative Learning Lab up at Cascade View. And what I wonder about now, the next phase on those is kind of the ongoing upgrade. So those, you know, the Creative Learning Labs are just full of all kinds of technology. And technology, as we know, requires, you know, upgrading from time to time. And so, so my question there is, you know, do we have plans, you know, a good plan in place for how we're going to keep them current over time? So that's, I guess I would say, you know, yeah, keep, maybe change the focus on the Creative Learning Labs from equal access, which we've done, check, to kind of what's the, you know, what's the plan for keeping them, you know, current and upgraded?
Okay. All right. Oh, here, we do summer school every year. That's part of the plan. So and then we decided to remove the Boys and Girls Club as far as the collaboration. Again, there's no budget necessarily tied to that as well as establishing and maintain committee partnerships. There is no dollar amounts attached to that. Both of those kind of go back to, where's? Number one, so those, if everybody's in agreement, we can go ahead and just delete those two bullet points.
I guess the question on, yeah, increased collaboration with community organizations. The question for me there is, they're probably, and I think it's, we've recognized that there's, there's work that the district needs to do to make those happen. So, yeah, once we get, you know, a relationship with communities and schools or whatever it is, then, you know, maybe they'll, they'll bring dollars with them to do their work. But still, I think there's, I think there's still a need, you know, I mean, that's, we talked about part of the new Communications Director, for example, part of the job, I think, is to kind of, you know, go find the various community groups or, you know, increase the involvement or, you know, something along those lines. So it seems to me like there's still a district budget line that's connected with that work.
Okay, and would you see that just sitting within the communications budget then?
Well, it's kind of up to you guys and Dr. Hernan where you want to, you know, put it in the org chart. But I mean, that, there's work that needs to be done there, I think.
Yeah, I, I've seen, I've been really intentional this last year, looking at how, once again, how other districts are addressing. So we've got gaps when it comes to family engagement and community engagement. And so whatever that needs to look like to improve, that's what I would, would want to put as a priority, that we ought to have a priority towards family engagement, community engagement. And then what that looks like can be many different things in terms of how it plays out in our community.
Yeah, to me, I see this especially being one of those areas called out in our strategic plan, district strategic plan. And then I think it makes it much more integral in a lot of the different facets that we have.
And then sometimes it'll just be kind of part of the work that goes on. But I think there's still maybe a case of, in some cases, where we need to, you know, intentionally apply some resources to have somebody go do, you know, some work in that area.
Yeah, I think that's so true. Agree with, with Bridgette and Dave, just thinking about like, our priorities are often where our money goes. And so if we can prioritize and, but even just by keeping it in there, I think that could be really beneficial.
And this type of, you know, if it's, I don't know what it'll be. I'll leave that up to the district. But if it was like a position or an office, some, you know, it would be for the whole district. So if this is an opportunity for potential partners to reach out to us or possible grants, this person or the group could be part of me kind of connecting school buildings, connecting, you know, out to the whole district or to other community organizations. So it's, it's, at least that's how I'm seeing it done in other districts, is this, like, that work is really important work. And we don't have people that are designated or we don't have a budget item right now for that.
The other part of this, as I mentioned, if the bill comes through, the Language Access Bill comes through the legislature this year, there will be, I've seen in the budget, there will be dollars. And I think just wild estimate for me, looking at it, it's like, for us, maybe a third to a half FD. So, you know, it doesn't always necessarily a full-time person, but, you know, there's dollars there to, to, you know, because for us, anytime you talk about family community access, you're talking about language issues, because, you know, 60% of our children are from families, their English is not their primary language. So anyway, that's another, and that, hopefully that, that bill will go through. And so there will be some budget there for, just for that part of it. It's, obviously it's much bigger than just. And so there will be some budget there for, just for that part of it. It's, it obviously is much bigger than just that, but that's part of it.
I got rid of the K through three class sizes. Again, we've been pretty great with meeting that, if not at seventeen, about seven point two. So we have did really well in that area. Again, when it comes to camp, I know it's going to look different, but those dollars are still earmarked for camp. Again, it might look different, but we still have those dollars.
And by the way, Veronica, just the, the legislature, also there's bills that are, that will fund outdoor education going through the legislature and they're still alive. So we'll see how that comes out in the end, but we may get some funding help from the legislature. It's specifically, it's like it was written for us because it's specifically designed for fifth and sixth grade outdoor education camps. So, yeah, we'll see how that comes, but that we may get some help on that area as well.
Great. Um, was there anything specific to the dual language? Bullet point?
I think for, for my thinking on this is just, we want to make sure we have sufficient budget in there to successfully launch the program. I mean, we got, you know, the presentation on dual language and, and they listed, you know, various things that, that they think they need to be successful. So we just want to make sure that, you know, that we're, because, yeah, I've been a lot of different presentation on dual language programs that don't work so well and frequently it's that they don't get the support they need. I mean, in terms of, you know, they outline criteria or curriculum and staffing needs. And, you know, they even pointed out, which I think is related to one of our other ones here, is another community liaison, Spanish. You know, if we're going to do this. So anyway, I just, you know, this is just to make sure, at least in my mind, that, you know, we've got the, the budget there to support what they need to be a, a successful launch.
Um, and then with the, um, the community liaison, I'm thinking we can probably disregard that piece. Again, we are in the process of hiring. We, the need is out there. We all recognized it. We're pushing through to get another Spanish liaison. So that will be funded. If everybody's in agreement, we can get rid of that one because we.
So Veronica, for the increase for the arts specifically, I, instead of support, can we have access? Create, that we increase our access? And I'm not sure, like, at the elementary level. So when you think about band choir drama, is this primary or secondary, right? And thinking about equity, what's happening at the primary levels as well? Or how are, how is primary brought in to having access to these things? That would be my question. So increasing access to the arts. And I know that over the years, I watched when my kids were in primary, how art was cut back. And I don't know if it's still really cut back where, you know, there's a teacher that's spending only so much time in each building. So there's not even like an art class, an ongoing art class in the, in the building. So, and, and once again, if we're, if we're going to increase access, is it a school employee? Or is it a partnership with more community-based organizations who could create more access for us? So that our kids are able to have more opportunity to be exposed to all the different arts?
Yeah, and I think the, the answer is both, of course. For example, when you're talking about drama, I think of the Disney program that is going at the, at least two of the elementary schools. And so anyway, yeah, it's in my mind, it's, it's both.
Have, has there been, a conversation started up about, it says meeting in the minds would play a huge part in what the plan would look like, having meeting with department heads. Has that started Veronica, or is that in the plan?
An initial meeting, I would have to ask Ted exactly when that happened. But I believe that there were, there wasn't an initial meeting to get this process started. But I will ask Ted and follow up with you. Okay, the biotech to expand and support CTE programs. There, there are CTE dollars. So I believe we can help support those measures. I know that Jeff has been working really hard to get more CTE courses going at the high school. And that has been shown through our allocation increasing over the last couple of years. And so we do have CTE dollars.
Yeah, so I guess this came up for me when I went up and visited the advanced biotech lab of that foster with Mr. Renzen. You know, the, the issues that he brought up were primarily around. So that program, you know, requires a lot of advanced equipment and which he has gotten through grants and donations and so forth. But then, you know, that's, that's great, but that equipment requires ongoing maintenance to it. You know, it's fairly sophisticated equipment. And then it also has a lot of consumables, you know, related to it. And so, so the, my question there was just to make sure that we have, you know, as we look at, and that's just one CTE program. But, you know, there's others as well that we've done the analysis to determine, you know, what is, what does it actually cost to keep these programs running in terms of the, you know, whatever equipment they need and, and the maintenance of it and the consumables? And, you know, I, yeah, so I just want to make sure, the reason I kind of brought this up, to make sure that we've done the analysis to keep the, you know, the CTE programs that we want to keep because that they're, you know, adequately funded and we've done that analysis. Because we may, you know, some of them may be fairly expensive. And then we need to figure out, you know, do we have, is, are there, I know you've indicated in the, the CTE MSO dollars. At this point, there should be lots of them there. I just want to make sure we did the analysis against the program to determine that that's actually true and we're able to support. Because Mr. Renz, I guess, wasn't, he didn't seem like he was convinced that, you know, the money was, was necessarily there to support all the, all the needs of that particular program.
No, perfect. Thank you. And you bring up a good point because it's about the plan, right? Sometimes people, you know, they get these amazing donations. They give them, and if you don't do the analysis or plan, you have this free fifty thousand dollar item, right? You stick it in and I need a ventilation system because it produces toxic chemicals, right? So, I, I, I hear where you're coming from. So that is.
And it just, we just, we just need to sit down and do that, do that analysis. And, you know, if we come up short, then we need to figure out, okay, can we get some grants other places or, you know, what is it? But we need to, yeah, if we launch a program, we need to make sure that we can maintain it, you know, and deliver a good service to the students.
Absolutely. And when it comes to communications, as we're all aware, we did hire a point seven five communication specialist. And, and there is a budget. I can't tell you off the top of my head. I would have to run a report to see what that particular budget looks like for, for Ms. Carrie to work within. But again, we did hire somebody and she does have a budget.
And welcome, Carrie. Can we go back to the grant thing? At one time, I know that before a staff member could apply for a grant, it had to be somewhat approved so that these situations wouldn't happen. Do we still have that process?
Um, we still, I would say we still have the form as far as the process. No, but I really haven't heard of anybody applying for any grants. I want to say that the threshold had to at least be, I believe it was like a ten thousand dollar threshold. Because sometimes when you do grants, the, you know, there's either a match or sometimes the work that's needed is nowhere near the worth of the grant, if that makes sense. But yes, there is, there is a process, but no one's, I don't, I haven't seen any forms come through requesting grants for anything specific.
So when, when Dave was mentioning that Tim had got a grant, was that something that went through a process or?
Depending on what grant he's speaking about, it may have been something that Mr. Baker of my board. I know that, you know, he oversees the CTE. And I know that sometimes, like, I want to say, I think his name is, no, I'm not going to mess up his name. I don't remember. But I think it was one of the band teachers at the high school got a ten thousand dollar grant between the middle school and high school. And I was like, oh, that's great. How did that happen? You know, so it's just, hey, you know, we do have a process. But again, it met the threshold. It was a huge benefit between the middle school and high school. So.
And sometimes these things come in through donations as well, which there's no particular grant process. But we need to kind of know if, if we're donating, if somebody's donating a, a specific piece of equipment that's going to require, you know, maintenance and, and consumables and so forth, then, you know, we need to be aware of that. Obviously, at the budget level.
So I'm wondering for number three, with our strategic planning and the rollout, is there going to be any cost involved moving forward at all? Or like any thoughts about that? And I, I don't know, Doc, Dr. Hernan, if that's something that would sort of be captured here or not?
Yeah, I think that that is something that we should take a look at. Although I think if, you know, if we have the board priorities, the budget priorities, I'm guessing most of those, we can find how they would nest within the strategic goals of the district. But there may, there may be a need, once we go through that process, to say, okay, here's what we have. Those priorities, here's where they're living within the strategic direct, the strategic plan for the district. And then as we look again annually, as both Director Larson and, and we go through this process and budget annually, we just want to make sure that those two things are in alignment, headed in the same direction, supporting each other. So if you're asking specifically, will the strategic planning require additional money? I think we've already paid for what we need to for the actual process. But the implications of the strategic plan, that could be a different story about how that impacts the budget. But I would, if I'm reading through kind of what I'm hearing from directors, I would say, you know, from what I'm hearing, this should be informative to the strategic planning process.
I'm not sure where this would live, but we need more multilingual speaking staff and educators in our district. That, in terms of like how that plays out. Or I don't know if there ever has been a time where our district has really encouraged folks to actually learn second or third languages. Or if we prioritize hires, right? If we prioritize hires for multilingual, especially in the language is spoken by our, the students and, and the families in the district.
Seems like that would fit with the number four, I guess, is on here, the whole hiring process. That kind of wording should be included in there, I think.
I agree.
Because it's also related to our dual language program as well, when we're talking about hiring multilingual.
Is there anything else under number three that we need to discuss? So the school lunch, the school lunch standards, I went on and, and strike that out. Outside of that, is there anything else that needs to be addressed for number three?
Sorry, I just have a quick question for clarity. In the communications bullet right under number three, what is that stipend, the three thousand dollars should I be used for?
Well, I think it was for the, the website. For the, I think, I believe it was teachers keeping up their, the schools, their school website information.
Okay. And is the plan for that amount to, to be moved into their next budget priorities? Or just based on this being a priority, you'll kind of decide what that stipend amount is?
Good question. I have to see. I have to see if we still even offer that stipend.
And I, and I'm going to ask again about Ben and Debbie who worked so diligently on, on the website that were not provided any monetary recognition for doing so.
Is there anything else under number three?
Yeah, the only thing I, where you say ending from about six percent for twenty-one, twenty-two. If this is a forward-looking, do, do you mean that's the goal for twenty-two, twenty-three? Is that, that was my thinking on that one?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
There's nothing else on three. Then the only thing left was four, which was spoke to the recruiting and onboarding process of of staff that are reflective of our students, pretty much.
Veronica, I did have one more thing on three. I'm sorry, I didn't push the button in time. Under the bullet where it says school lunch nutritional standard, is that one being removed at this point? I just wanted clarification, or is it staying?
That one, I believe, was removed. I mean, we can have a discussion.
We removed that one because there was concern about the previous administration and a reduction in quality of our nutritional standards. So we want to maintain those.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just going to put this out there because I, we, we've heard it from the students. At least I keep hearing it from students whenever visiting classrooms. Student satisfaction with school lunch might be just an area that are, that's something that seems pretty darn important to students. And don't know, I mean, maybe that's part of how we are spending our budget money for that.
Also kind of, go ahead.
I'd, I'd be interested in, yeah, so this, I wrote, put this one originally and, and Dr. Hernan described what it was original. That's, so that's gone away. But I also agree with Bridgette that, I mean, you know, we hear about, if you want to get students talking at Foster High School, ring up food, and they'll start talking. I can guarantee you, that's been true forever. So establishing, you know, some kind of ongoing system where students can provide input to the Food Service Director and that, I mean, that needs to be an ongoing discussion. And, and I don't think we've ever really gotten there. We've had ti, at times where they get together and then it goes away. And so leaving that, leaving it on from that perspective, I think would be, I would be in favor of that.
And then I had one more under safety issues. So once again, listening to student perspective. However, this needs to look, that all students understand, you know, what sexual harassment and sexual safety is, gender inclusive, safe spaces, and then bystander training. So in terms of how to respond if you witness, you know, a racial slur, how to respond if you witness bullying, kinds of things. And so like, to me, those are major issues related to student safety and sense of belonging in order to learn.
Yeah, I think on that one, this one has come up for a while about how do students report bullying incidents, for example, or different, different incidences that are coming up? And that's why I kind of, I kind of go back to this idea of having some kind of app available to students where they can report these kinds of things, either with their names or anonymously, either way. And then have, you know, somebody in the district that can keep track of that. We, a number of years ago, we talked about that and the response came back, well, we need a staff person to monitor that. So we don't want to do that. But, you know, it's true, you need a staff person to monitor it. But this is, I think, pretty important stuff. So, you know, having, you know, a, an easy way for students to be able to, you know, report these issues anonymously or not, I think is, is important.
As well as staff, right? So I, I, I know Erin is on the, on call right now. And I know that there are regular trainings that the staff get each year, but the students ought to be informed that if a staff witnesses certain behaviors, that what their responsibilities are. Because that's where I see there could be breakdowns, because there's all too often our staff not, not paying attention or they don't see it happening. Like I've actually happened, that has happened with like micro and macro aggressions in the classroom. Or when the student does go and tell them something, they don't respond, they don't do what they ought to do. And so not only staff should hold on to that knowledge and information, students should know what, how adults are protecting them, how adults are to take care of them in the classroom. Should there be some type of harm happening?
Mr. Howard added to the, excuse me, Bridget, were you done? Okay, Mr. Howard put in the chat that we will have this in place with our new school app. The report will go to the principals for each school. Is that about the dietary concerns, Mr. Howard?
No, this is for the, the bullying and anything.
Thank you. Thank you. That's good to know.
And, and even with, you know, the dietary stuff, I know that Trevor sends out staff surveys. Excuse me, not staff, student surveys to kind of get input. And so I don't know if all students are aware of it. I've had conversations with them, like, okay, what comes back from that? And he's like, well, a lot of them went burgers, burgers and pizza. But then when you go talk to the students in the classroom, they're like, no, X, Y, Z, and whatever the case may be. So, you know, a, a quick fix of that, like you said, is it ongoing, maybe every quarter to just try to see where students are at. All right, so we have seven minutes and we're on a number four. So is there anything that we would like to add to number four?
I think definitely the piece around seeking out more bilingual staff, as Bridget mentioned before. And I'm not sure if it falls into this exactly, and I think, I don't know if I shared this at our last meeting or not, but there was some feedback just around turnover and staff turnover. And, and how are we capturing information about, like through exit interviews about why staff are leaving? And then so that we can actually be proactive in trying to, you know, mitigate those things. So I don't know if it fit there, but as a part of that recruitment and onboarding system, there could be an exit system as well. I'm sure there's something exists, but again, like how are we really using that information to inform future decisions and supports?
Yeah, I think bringing up the, we've brought this up many times, retention. I mean, it's one thing to hire them, but you have to retain them as well. So working that into this discussion is important.
And I'm not sure what is meant by believe in the direction of the district. I just maybe would need some clarity of like what that is, what does that mean? I have some additional identifiers, like in thinking about, you know, how, you know, multilingual preferred immigrant identity preferred, graduates of HBCUs preferred, first gen preferred, or participates in these established networks that we know from our educators of color. That would, I mean, is there any way to be really intentional about how we're actually screening and who we're bringing into the district? And then, you know, going back to these other, these other types of competencies, such as bystander training. Like is this person competent that if they witness harm being done, how will they respond to it? Oftentimes, there might be like an equity or diversity question, but I want to know not just what you talk, how do you walk? Like what goes on there? And so like, and honestly, I don't know how the district would want to word this, but our workforce should be reflective of our community. And so however that needs to happen, that we have 90% BIPOC that we're serving every day. And so in my mind, as a director, that ought to be our workforce. And our workforce should be, you know, also multilingual immigrant identity, graduates of HBCUs or first gen, and then also engaging in actual BIPOC or educated educator of leader types of work that's happening in the area.
Thank you. All right, is there anything else? I've got four minutes.
One thing that came to mind, again, the school lunches, I know that there has been, this was before I joined. So if I'm missing something, that's, I'm sorry. But I know that we have had to raise school lunch costs over a period of time. And I'm wondering if there could be something in here around our priorities to essentially prevent us or help keep us from raising costs for, you know, those folks that need those free and reduced lunch the most?
For the folks who qualify for free and reduced lunch, the cost doesn't impact them. So it's, that's for folks who are paying the, the full amount for the price. And that's not a lot of our students, because we do have a significant number of students who are in the free and reduced lunch category. So we do try and mitigate that cost as much as possible. However, that being said, even when we do have the cost increases, we do some comparisons to districts around us. And we try and keep, keep the cost as low as possible. And even with that, we still, you know, have families and students that end up still having a balance. So we've been trying to figure out a way to wipe out that balance. We can't do that within our budget, because again, that's viewed as a gift of public funds. So we've tried to work with other folks to figure out a way to zero out those balances.
I wonder if maybe, because I know with most, you know, subsidy opportunities or, you know, funding, usually there's a, there's a significant gap in folks that qualify, and then folks that actually still make enough money to be able to afford the full cost. So maybe that's the provision in our, in our budget, that maybe there's a way that we can fill that gap, right? For folks that don't qualify for free and reduced lunch, but also cannot pay the full price. I don't know if that's a possibility, but.
Yeah, again, I think something we can explore, but it, but I think we just have to see what the wording is and what the auditor's office might interpret that, the way we want you to interpret that. But it doesn't mean we can't figure out some other creative ways to figure out how to reduce that, for sure. We don't want any students or families going hungry.
Yeah, the other thing that's, I mean, there's a movement in the legislature to, to just provide free lunch for everybody. But there's also the, you know, CEP community, I forget the acronym anyway. But it's, it's a little complicated, because it, it means that we could go to everybody getting a free lunch. But then the question is, how do we measure the, the percentage of students that, you know, are, are in poverty? Because we have a bunch of other funding streams to depend on that number. And if that number isn't, but the legislature is actually working on that. And I'm hopeful that maybe next year or something, though, we'll be able to get past this issue and just give free lunches to everybody. So it's, it's, it's in the works, but not there yet.
Right, sounds good.
All right, Ms. Bertong, did we get, did you get everything from us that you needed this time?
Yes, I did. I did, I did. So next steps would be, I work with Deb, make sure our notes match. Send out just for final review. Obviously, everybody can't respond to the same email, because we don't want to go to a special session. And then I will get on some different platforms, share it, and then come back for your final review, which would include input that I got from staff and families and communities, and then we'll go from there. The goal is to hope, the goal is to have this finalized before my second budget advisory committee meeting, which is the second Thursday in March.
And we just got a, the board just got an email from somebody that, the TACO, TACO PTA that wants to, wants to get input on this. So I'm sure you'll be in touch with them.
Yeah, so before the 17th.
Yep.
When we did finalize. All right, sounds good.
All right. Did you have something, Edna?
No, I just was thanking Veronica.
Oh, yes, thank you. All right, and we'll go ahead and motion to adjourn. Anyone want to do that?
So second.
Okay, all in favor? I think I heard all eyes. All right, see y'all in 30 minutes. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.